I'd like to call the January tenth, two thousand twenty-four Regular Board Meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation. Loving and merciful God, with the start of the new year, we humbly ask that you keep us safe and renew our faith in you. Help us grow together in patience, love, and understanding while moving our school system forward with pride, passion, and purpose. Guide our newly selected officers to bind us as one people so we may honor and glorify you in all that we do. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will have roll calls.
Mr. Wright, here. Dr. Gia, Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Fatida.
Here.
Mr. Duclanis, here. Ms. Bouchois.
Here.
Mr. Lefont, here. Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Sharpenchak.
Here.
Jacore.
On to E, we will receive a report from LaFouche Parish Agriculture Extension Service, Ms. Becky Goutro and Ms. Suzanne Troxler.
Becky Goutro, Parish Chairman and Nutrition Agent for the LSU Ag Center. Just to update you guys, we picked a great busy meeting to come to. So we're gonna be real quick. In front of you is our quarterly report for the third quarter. Since then, we have hired Ms. Sarah Guidry as our 4-H agents to help out Suzanne. So now we have a full-packed office, which is fantastic and super exciting. This morning, we broke ground on the new LaFouche Parish multi-agricultural arena and livestock barn, so that's coming up, which is fantastic. It'll be done by the end of the year. Nutrition-wise, we have done parent meetings in Lockport, a three-port series, the last one's at the middle of this month. Lockport second grade has had six-class series, Bayou Pre-K, Bayou kindergarten. We put signs and banners in the schools reminding people about fruits and vegetables and physical activity. We started a buddy-buddy bench program because of mental health awareness. And so the first bench is going to be installed at Raceland Upper, coming up soon. It should be shifted soon, and then it'll be, the plan is, at all fourth and fifth-grade schools so that kids can have a buddy whenever they're feeling down and depressed and not be down or depressed, and have a buddy. And then we're doing play streets, which is kind of like a physical activity field day at Tivodale Elementary at the end of this month with Tivodale High School volunteers helping. And then on the twenty-third of this month, there's a family planting night where kids and family are gonna come together and plant carrot seeds with the Indian education students. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ayo.
So good evening, everyone. My name's Randy Lynn Toop, I'm the livestock report agent over at the Ag Center. One program that I did want to tell you all about that's not in the quarterly review, in October, we held a Farm City Day over at the LSU Ag Center building. We had five hundred and thirty second graders that came from seven different schools that came to learn about the process of food from the farm to the table. So we're really proud of that, and that is a program that we want to start back up annually. They used to have it back in the nineteen-eighties and nineties, held by Farm Bureau. And Farm Bureau is still a main contributor, monetary, and they bring volunteer support to support this program. But we did bring it back this year, and we're very excited about it to continue to educate elementary level on some of the agriculture industries that we have throughout our parish. So that is just one program I wanted to let you all know about that we will be having in the future. If any of y'all would ever like to come, I could attach y'all to the email address to be called. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Troxler. Thank you for having us back here, and it's a special night with all of our students here and the audience waiting. Just to give you an update on 4-H in our parishes, of course, we're in all of our schools in LaFouche Parish, and we're also in Vow St. Mary, we're in Vow South, and we have a homeschool program as well for those students who are at other sites, who their administrators haven't yet opted into it. But we do have that open to every school and every vow site, including e-learning. We even have it there. So all of the schools and our peripheral schools do have 4-H in our parish. We're very proud of that. Almost nine hundred students are involved in the 4-H program. Many of the students who are in our audience here are 4-H members, and you know, this just goes to show what 4-H does for our students. It forms them into the leaders that they are today, and they're continuing to make a difference. A few of the things that have come up the last time we spoke, the last time we were here to report, I told you about one of our Central LaFouche students, Parker Richard, who was on a national championship team. They actually won the National Student Sports Championship, Louisiana did, so he was a part of that national championship team. Also, we have this Christine Collins, who has, Ms. Chrissy Collins, who has at Cut Off Elementary piloted the Clover Budz program. This is a pre-4-H program for third graders. So she really took the lead and is piloting that in her school, and we hope to extend that into our other schools into next year. That's another program that we're very proud about. And also, I was today at Tivodale Middle School, beautiful new school, and we are going to have a 4-H robotics team that is going to extend from their team there. So these are things that are very exciting and new in our 4-H program, and we just want to thank you for all of your support of our students and all of the support that you give us throughout the year.
Any questions?
We want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for our students. It really helps them build their self-esteem and mental health. Thank you for that. Number two, awards and recognition. A, to recognize Ms. Tina Nakam Babin for her service to the board as president for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. And while she walks up, I'd like to read a couple of the accomplishments that happened under her leadership as president. She was the first president of the Reed District Nine-member Board, Hurricane Ida Recovery Response for the third consecutive year, pay increase of four thousand dollars for teachers, and two thousand dollars for support staff as a result of the successful sales tax election. Named CLHS Football Field Bob Grove Field in honor of Mr. Bob Grove, longtime coach there. Grand opening and ribbon cutting of Tivodale Middle School. Fielded temporary vacancy of District Seven with Mr. Henry Lefont Jr. Issued one-time employee stipends of two thousand dollars for teachers and one thousand dollars for support staff utilizing the state appropriation funding for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Reinstated board member compensation and extended the superintendent's contract. And I have to say, she did it all with professionalism and integrity. Thank you, Miss Babin.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I don't want to take much of your time, but I do want to tell you guys, first, I want to thank my family, my husband. I would never have had the courage to step out of my comfort zone and even run for office if it wasn't for these guys. So they are extremely important to me, very supportive, wouldn't do without them. This board, if you please could take a look around the stable, using these people sitting here, these are good people. These are all very good people, and they have the best interests of our students and our employees and mom. And in any given day, I could call or text any one of these dolls and say, hey, I need you, this is what's going on. And my response that I got from them was, I appreciate your call, I support you, and I trust you. And that meant the world to me because, you know, when we faced adversity, we couldn't face it alone, and I couldn't do it by myself. I needed every single one of you. So thank you all very much. Teacher. I'm so grateful to you guys, so thank you all very much. Mr. Martin, Ms. Nguyen, in the central office staff, so many thanks to all of you guys. You make things happen. You make us look good. You do the work, and you are never, ever appreciated enough. So thank you all very much for everything that you guys do. To the faculty and staff and employees and students, when it comes down to it, you guys are the why. You are the reason that we do all the things that we do. So please just keep making the LaFouche Parish proud. Thank y'all all very much.
D, to recognize board members who have completed hours of training and instruction for two thousand twenty-three in accordance with Act seven oh five. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recognize board members who participated in board member trainings and successfully completed the required minimum of six hours of training for two thousand twenty-three in accordance with Act seven oh five. All board members have also completed the required one hour of ethics training in accordance with Act three. Mr. Myron Wright, twenty-six hours. Dr. Dennis Gia, eleven hours. Tina Babin, twenty-six point two-five hours. Ms. Marion Fatida, thirty hours. Mr. Claude Duclanis, third, eighteen and a half hours. Ms. Valerie Bouchois, twenty hours. Ms. Leslie Wells, twenty hours. And Ms. Buffy Lynn Sharpenchak, thirty-one hours.
Jocelyn. Want to see, to recognize committee chairpersons and members of the advisory committee for their service to the board for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. Mr. Martin.
Yes, Madam President. Members of the advisory committee were Ms. Tina Babin, Ms. Valerie Bouchois, and Ms. Buffy Lynn Sharpenchak. Please stand and be recognized. And as outgoing chairpersons, you may stand and be recognized as we call your name. Policy and academics, Dr. Dennis Gia, Land of Facilities, Mr. Claude Duclanis, Business Committee, Ms. Marion Fatida, and master-at-arms parliamentarian, already standing, Dr. Dennis Gia.
Thank you all. And on to D, introduce new administrators to our district. Mr. Martin.
Man, there's usually nobody here, so it's so easy for these new administrators to introduce themselves, but tonight's a little different. I don't even know where to look for Ms. Angela Gaitre's energy. There we go. Come on, Ms. Angela Gaitre. We want to welcome you, Whoop, has been working at South LaFouche High School but has now accepted a new role as Assistant Principal of South LaFouche High School. So thank you and welcome to your new role at your old school, South LaFouche High School. And we are also welcoming Ms. Betsy Capeport to a new position, Assistant Principal at Cut Off Elementary School, Chairwoman. Thank you, and thank you for agreeing to take on this new role in your career in LaFouche High School District.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I hope you'll do a great job for our district. And on to D, the reason why most of you are here tonight, the LaFouche Parish District Student and Staff Recognitions. Mr. Guidry.
I'm here. Yeah, I think the first two are actually going to be Mr. Lee, so keep us again.
All right, you're ready. All right, well, good evening. Our first recognition will be for employees who fulfill the Louisiana State Certification Program requirements to be certified administrative assistants. So a little background about this. The Louisiana Institute for Administrative Assistance Committee requires the following to be met in order to obtain the Certified Administrative Assistant designation. An applicant must currently be employed in an administrative, secretarial, clerical, or related position in Louisiana on a full or part-time basis. An applicant must have been employed with the same agency or business for at least two calendar years at the time of certification. The applicant must also earn a total of a hundred education points and fifty experience points. Once the above requirements are met, candidacy is formally established upon receipt of the completed application. The Certified Administrative Assistant designation reflects the recipient's knowledge and skills gained through practical work experience, formal education, professional development, and job-related seminars. And it is my honor to recognize two of our individuals that work in our central office this evening. And first, we have Ms. Annette Babin, who works in the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Congratulations, Ms. Annette, and I know her husband is here with her this evening as well, so thank you. And our second recipient is Ms. Kim Grove, who works in the Child Welfare and Attendance Office. And again, Ms. Kim's husband is here with us also this evening. Thank you. All right, congratulations, ladies. Thank y'all.
All right, the next employee that we're gonna recognize this evening is from Central LaFouche High School, and this is an award for him as well as the program that he built. Mr. Willie Martin was awarded the two thousand twenty-three Louisiana Music Educators Association Standard of Excellence Award. Mr. Willie Martin.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, my bill's standing. Additionally, Phi Beta Mu is a professional fraternity organized to promote fellowship amongst its members, to encourage the building of better bands and the development of better musicians in schools throughout the world, to foster a deeper appreciation for quality wins in literature, and to encourage widespread interest in band performance. Mr. Willie Martin was recognized as the two thousand twenty-three Louisiana Bandmaster of the Year by Phi Beta Mu.
Before you sit down, I'm gonna say a couple things. So I worked with Willie Martin as a principal, and now I've gotten the good fortune of having a kid in his program at Central LaFouche High School. I would say there's none finer. You're doing a fantastic job. We're very proud of you. You're making the entire district proud. Keep up the good work. Congratulations, you did a great job.
Thank you. I do want to just express to the board, Mr. Martin, that, you know, music is strong in the parish, and music is important in the parish, and one reason that we have such a great learning community in LaFouche is because, a lot is because of the value of music education in our area. Thank you for the continued support. You know, people want to teach here, band directors do, because of the way that it's set up here, and I appreciate all of that support. So thanks.
All righty, at this time, we're going to recognize the students who received Student of the Year at the elementary level. We'll first name all of the winners from their respective schools, and then we'll save the winners for last. We'll have a little suspense. So from Bayou Blue Upper Elementary, we have Lila Marcelle, daughter of Jason, and Lena Marcelle. From Bayou Buff Elementary, we have Jake Leday, son of Alex, and Chelsea Leday. From Bayou Community Academy, we have Georgia Wang, daughter of Key and Fan Wang. From CM Washington, we have Amy Cruz, daughter of Wilson Cruz, and Karen Ortiz. From Chacvee Elementary, Vanna Bouchois, daughter of Joe Bouchois Junior, and Vicky Luquette. From Cut Off Elementary, Preston Otan, son of Bryce and Ashley Otan. I think they like your suit. I like it too. From Galliano Elementary, Kayden Plazons, son of Justin and Lisa Plazons. From Golden Meadow Upper Elementary, we have Bailey Bora, daughter of Scotty and Maggie Bora. Hooray, okay. It's hooray, sorry. I asked four people before, and they said it four different ways, so I apologize. That's what was my original intention. All righty, from Lockport Upper Elementary, we have Kenley Alamon, daughter of Willie and Sarah Alamon. From North LaRose Elementary, John Robisho, son of Paul and Jerry Robisho. From Raceland Upper Elementary, Henry Taylor, son of Stephen and Kimzie Taylor. From South LaRose Elementary, we have Madison LaSang, daughter of Johnny and Tanya LaSang. All righty, from St. Charles Elementary, William Danos, son of Dustin and Chantel Danos. One last round of applause for our fifth grade.
Continue to take pictures, but know that on the website tomorrow, you'll be able to find all the pictures he's taking and on Facebook. With that, middle school, okay. From Bayou Blue Middle School, we have Cagney Porton, the daughter of Trampus and Mending Porton. She's actually at a FFA competition right now. From Bayou Community Academy, AJ Lefont, son of Michael, Indiana Lefont.
AJ, one more. AJ, AJ, one more. All right, I got it.
From Golden Meadow Middle School, Sadie Gaspar, daughter of Wesley and Randy Gaspar. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Amelia Wells, daughter of Dustin and Leslie Wells. From Lockport Middle School, Annie Rodriguez, daughter of David and DeSina Rodriguez. From Raceland Middle School, Connor Hith, son of Harry and Jolie Hith. From Sixmore Middle School, we have Quinn Nichols, son of Kenny and Stacy Nichols. From Tivodale Middle School, we have Aubrey Keane, the daughter of Thomas Bajaron and Caitlin Stout. From Central LaFouche High School, Keegan Griffin, son of Troy Griffin and Danielle Gobach. From South LaFouche High School, Evan Louvier, son of Peter and Bonnie Louvier. And from Tivodale High School, Claire Bolton, daughter of Mark and Tanya Bolton. And from Tiberio High School, Claire Bolton, daughter of Mark and Tanya Bolton.
All righty. This is what y'all been waiting for, huh? All righty. So, our fifth grade Student of the Year from LaFouche Parish Schools. It was really hard. I just want to let you know, when you have this many great kids, to only be able to select one is really, it's very difficult. I don't look forward to it. But we have to name a winner, and this year, our winner is from Bayou Buff, Mr. Jake Ledet.
Okay. Our eighth grade Parish winner, Student of the Year, from LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Amelia Wells.
Come, come, no, no, no. Come, come, come. Miss Rose, signal the credits.
And our high school, our 12th grade Student of the Year, Evan Louvier, South LaFouche.
Can I get him to turn this way, Mr. Dean?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
After, after y'all.
Yeah, we're good. Let's get the picture, and then we'll turn. All right. Now, look at the TV camera.
All right. Thank you.
So, what we always hear at awards ceremonies like this, but it's so true. Everyone here tonight just deserves such tremendous accolades and just congratulations, because to be representing your school as one of the best kids in the school is just an amazing thing. So, I just want to make sure that we give all of the credit to all the kids here, but also the parents here that make all of their experiences possible, because they certainly would not be here without your support. And for those Parish winners, I will tell you that you need to go talk to this young lady over here, Ms. Blakely Faugoo, who went from here and went on to become the state eighth grade Student of the Year last year. So, she's got a secret handshake to show you. How to accomplish. But in all seriousness, congratulations to all of you here. This is not a competition. It is a recognition of greatness, and you guys are just doing tremendous work. So, thank you for what you're doing, parents. Thank you for the support you're giving them and the school system. And if I'm not mistaken, the restaurants did not close tonight. You can go eat on your way home. So, thank you for what you're doing. Have a great night. Thank you all so much. You're welcome to stay, but you can also go over. Please take advantage of the new backdrop. If you want to take family pictures in front of it, it's in the front lobby. And we do have a short meeting, so if you want a photo with this ugly mug, I will be out probably in about 20 minutes. Welcome to stay and hang out. Take all the pictures you want. Thank you all so much.
Are we able to board consent agenda items? A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held December 6, 2023. C, proclamation, observations in the school's school board member recognition month, January 2024. Black History Month, February 2024. National School Counseling Week, February 5 through the 9, 2024. Can I have a motion? Mr. Batten, the second by Ms. Chopinjay? Is there any public comment? Any more discussion? Do we make a vote? Item number four, new business. A, election of one member to serve along with the president and vice president on the advisory committee of the LaFouche Parish School Board for a one-year term. Do we have any nominations for the advisory committee members?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Tina not Ken Batten.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. I'm sorry.
Motion.
We need a motion and a second to close nominations. There are...
The point of order is not a point of discussion from the public.
Okay. Just a vote. A vote to close.
Right to close nominations, go straight to a vote.
I have a question. Do we have to, do we have to vote since she's the only person that's been nominated?
You do not have to vote.
No, right. But do have to close.
You have to close nominations.
You have to vote to close nominations. Oh, my bad. So, we will vote now to close nominations.
Hand vote. All in favor? Raise your hand. So, they have none opposed. So, since there are no other nominations, Ms. Tina Batten has been elected to the advisory committee of the board by general consent of the members present. Congratulations, Ms. Batten. Number five, memorial resolutions. A, Luke James Martin student. Luke James Martin was an 11th grade student at Central LaFouche High School. He was the son of Lacy LeBuff and Kirby Martin. Luke passed away on Sunday, November 5, 2023. He was 16 years old. B, it's Ms. Megan Brown teacher. Ms. Megan Brown was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 3, 2020, as a special education teacher at Raceland Middle School. Ms. Brown passed away on December 15, 2023, and served LaFouche Parish for three and a half years. C, it's Michelle Dominique.
Michelle Dominique was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on October 10, 1994 as a paraprofessional at Bayou Blue Elementary School. In 2006, Ms. Domane transferred to Raceland Upper Elementary School. Ms. Domane retired on June 30, 2023, serving LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 30 years.
And I just have to say that Ms. Dominique, Cheryl Dominique, worked with me at Raceland Upper. She was a firecracker of a paraprofessional, loved the children. She ended her career in the computer lab and took Ms. Megan Brown, and then went back in the classroom. She will be dearly missed.
D, Ms. Orlean Adams, Batten.
Ms. Orlean Adams was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on February 28, 1977, as a teacher at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Ms. Adams also taught at East Tiberio Junior High School, Tiberio High School, and WS LaFaw Elementary School. Ms. Adams was appointed principal of Bayou Blue Elementary School on July 29, 1996. On July 25 of 2000, she was appointed principal of WS LaFaw Elementary School, where she remained until her retirement on June 30 of 2010. Ms. Adams served the LaFouche Parish School District for 33.5 years.
I'd like to make a comment. I've worked with Ms. Adams when she was the principal at LaFaw, and she was always so positive, and her faculty were just like her, and it was so fun to work with them, because you would tell them, we went in as a team, and we would say, well, this is the things that need to be addressed. And she'd go, yay, what else? You know, and I'm like, most of the schools are not very excited about hearing the things that need to be improved. But they would just, she led them to be like that, and they were just all so eager to make that school a better team. And she was really a joy to work with.
I have to echo that. I was Ms. Adams' assistant at LaFaw for seven years, I think it was. And we made, I have to say, we made a great team. We complimented each other. You know, we both loved the children, but I was the hugger. So, she would compliment them, and I would hug them. And I know she will be dearly missed by her only son, Chet, and her grandchildren.
F, Ms. Jeannie, I'm sorry, E, Ms. Jeannie Redding, retired cafeteria manager, Ms. Chopinjay.
Ms. Jeannie Redding was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 25, 1972, as a food service technician at Galliano Elementary School. In 1980, Ms. Jan was promoted to the cafeteria manager and served LaRose Cut Off Junior High School, LaRose Cut Off Middle School, LaRose Lower Elementary School, and Cut Off Elementary School until her retirement on December 5, 1996. Ms. Redding served the LaFouche Parish School District for 23 and a half years.
F, Mr. Ron, Ronald Briscoe, retired principal, Ms. Wells.
Mr. Ronald Briscoe was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 21, 1978, as a teacher at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. On October 4, 1990, he was promoted to assistant principal at LaRose Cut Off. On July 26, 1995, he was promoted to principal at LaRose Cut Off Middle, where he remained until his retirement on July 2, 2004. Mr. Briscoe served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 26 years. He was both my vice principal, well, they called him vice principal back then, and my principal. I remember liking him fondly. He was very quiet, but very well-respected.
I've known, I knew Ron for probably over 30 years, versus a member of the Golden Meadow Lions Club. And if you just read the memorials from his students and following his obituaries, you can tell how well-liked and well-loved he was. And he always, with that goatee, had that big rough look, but he was a big teddy bear. And he was, he had a very kind heart. He was a very gentle man.
And I have to echo that, because I got a chance to work with Ron also. Very, very amazing principal. The school, LCO, was always the school that all the middle school principals wanted to beat in their scores. Nobody ever accomplished that, but he ran a really, really good school. He was a great principal and a very kind gentleman. I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of the resolutions be recorded on the special page of our mini book.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on the special page of our mini book. Number six, ten table dates for future meetings. A, Policy and Academics Committee, Wednesday, January 24, 2024. B, Business Committee, Wednesday, January 24, 2024. C, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, January 24, 2024. And D, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, February 7, 2024. I just would love to wish everybody a Happy New Year. It's our first meeting back in the new year, so I hope everything's going well. And without further business, we are adjourned.